We're gonna lead in prayer, guys. Um, Lord, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the opportunity to gather here. We pray that you be with us as we make decisions in the benefit of the town, God. Let us hear from others with an open, open ears and open minds and come to a resolution together as a unit. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
And following the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And starting with Lord Paul, can I just start right here with the councilman Alan Webber?
I am here.
And next in line, or Justin is, um, Justin. Next in line is Courtney Webber.
Here.
And after that is the mayor, Josh Sheever. And next in line is Todd Askey.
Yeah.
Then Selena Terrell.
I'm here.
Alright, one comment, and this is, this is personal. We're having the meeting this evening because a couple of council members answered my text. Um, I put a text out, I think on the ninth or tenth of February because we were discussing on when to hold this meeting. Because of, again, the planning meeting, Planning Commission meeting normally happens this Tuesday. I only got two answers back, so please, if I'm asking you a question, answer the text and we can try to solve that in a timely fashion. Old business, um, I wanna bring up the senior center porch. We approved, um, and this'll, this'll have to be voted on, or I'm asking you to go look at it. But we approved the, um, repair of the front porch at the senior center. Uh, when the guy came about, uh, it's been almost two Saturdays ago, not this Saturday, but Saturday before, he started ripping up the porch. And about seventy-five percent of all the sub-beams that hold the porch up where it was very weathered uh, need to be replaced. Um, his original estimate was like forty-six hundred. His next estimate to replace the support beams for the majority of the porch adds another thirty-nine hundred bucks to the, the project. So it's something, what I'm asking is to, uh, if you don't want to approve this at the council meeting, uh, please just ride by the front of the senior center and look at the areas that are ripped up and what the damage is under the porch. So we can have an educated, uh, answer to, um, approve that additional funding.
So is he providing an itemized estimate?
Uh, well, the overall estimate to start with was for four feet of wood and the labor to take it up, put it back down, reapply the, um, hand railings, and we can get an itemized estimate on what he feels the, uh, support beams. And, uh, I got that from him today. That was his initial estimate, but it was about, again, about thirty-six hundred additional of what?
Yeah, the labor's what's gonna be on, going on that, tearing it out and then...
But he has, he has, except for the entrance way, which we've taped off so they can come and go. Uh, he's taken up the, the front porch, uh, so you can see where the damage is. And, um, talking today, he didn't have, he didn't have an estimate on the cost of the wood, but I can get that from him. He said this was his basic estimate at the start now.
So this additional thirty-nine hundred?
Thirty-six, yeah.
Thirty-six hundred, that's just labor? That's not counted material?
Oh, no, that's with materials.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes. But he called me over there on Saturday morning when they started taking it apart, there was termite damage, about fifty percent of the way, and just weathered and old and...
I could tell. They, they were bored. They were, I just put my hand on it and leaned on it. It was, it was soft. So I'm not, I'm not surprised.
So that's, that's information just to, that this is an ongoing project, um, that we have. New business. Is there anybody, I don't recognize, Gamecock Sports?
Taylor, is that you?
Just me back here.
And I, uh, you the one I was talking to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You wanna name, uh, do you wanna make sure, come on up with just a little bit?
Sure. Sorry about my appearance. I got a elbow playing basketball, so listen what I'm telling everybody.
Give me your name and who you're representing.
Uh, Taylor McCullough, and I am representing Gamecock Sports.
Okay.
Um, so, two things. Uh, one, we're trying to, uh, we had a guy that was willing to, um, the stalls in the, in the bathrooms, specifically the women's bathroom, are pretty tight, um, in, at the, at the field. I think you'd probably agree with that Selena, but, um, so we had a guy that was willing to replace the stalls at his, at his cost. He would just, he was basically donate his time to do that. Um, and so, uh, we would need approval for that from the city, I think, because it's, would be a change to the structure. Um, and so that was, that was one. Um, and then secondly was the, uh, electrical issue that you guys know about that happened at, uh, at the field. And I talked to the mayor about that about a week ago. Um, our request would be that, um, that you guys, the city would, would, would cover that cost. Um, just based on the fact that it is a, um, part of the field itself as opposed to something that like a, you know, something that we can, we can actually fix and actually cover with, with the, the money that we have. Um, and again, I understand that the, that the lease doesn't do us any favors, and, and I'm not, I'm not blaming y'all for that. I'm just saying, the way it is written, the way that we signed it years ago, um, doesn't do us any favors in, in the way that it is written, so... You know, our request is that, that would be covered just because it would be lease versus, um, owner agreement, and so that's what, I wanted to bring that up to you guys.
Okay. The backup, uh, what is, he's gonna repair the bathroom stalls?
Yes, sir.
What is the, uh, estimate on supplies?
Uh, I don't know, uh, to be honest with you, sir. Um, uh, I don't think it's gonna be a whole lot of supplies, um, just because he's gonna, he's gonna cover the cost of that, so I...
Well, you said, yeah, that's probably labor, but is he gonna have cost of, uh?
Materials as well.
Materials, yeah.
Supplies. He's gonna cover the materials as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be no cost to us or the city. It would just be, just him, why, and I've got a picture. I mean, y'all probably know, I mean, you kinda know what it looks like.
Is this gonna make them compliant with code?
Yes, ma'am.
Have them code?
Yeah, 'cause they're currently, yeah, they're currently, uh, they're, they're, I don't know if they're compliant or not. They're just, they're very narrow.
They're terrible. They are not compliant. They're not, um, handicap accessible.
Right.
If I can interrupt for a second, we had someone make them ADA compliant about three and a half years ago.
Okay.
The guy that made our bathrooms ADA compliant. He did it all at the same time.
Okay. I thought that they got a, maybe I'm wrong. I thought that they had gotten a bid for that and they didn't do that over there.
That's my remembrance as well.
I could be wrong. I know it was talked about around the same time.
There was a pretty extensive bid.
I remember, I remember there being a bid, and from what I understand, there was a bid, and then, uh, I don't know if there was a, like, I mean, the guy wasn't around then. I don't really know, um...
We had the bathrooms at the park redone.
Yes, yeah.
But I do know that there was a bid to do that out there, but I don't think the guy done because of a disagreement on some...
I feel like those things have not been touched since they were built originally.
Yeah, they're pretty, pretty regular, so...
It's a possibility. I just, I remember it being talked about.
That's correct. I think you're right on that.
Well, they may have already done the, the part.
They might have.
That's right.
Um, so, what we're gonna need to vote on, um, is the approval for let, to let somebody do that at the meeting on the third of March.
Yeah.
And, um, that'll go into the next discussion, and you do have an estimate in your book. The only thing we have here, uh, second page, is the estimate for the repair of the, uh, electrical. And that also would need to be voted on, on the third of March. Now, this is any other discussion that I, that's what I think you guys were gonna talk about, what has to be done?
Yeah, well, what is actually already done. The work is completed.
Oh, you've completed the work?
Yes, it was a safety hazard.
Yeah.
And, and we are discussing the ball field, that's correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
The light, no, it's all, it all sort of links together.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Name and, name and who you are?
I'm Mitchell Byrd with Byrd's Electric Services.
Okay.
And, uh, I was called and asked to come out and take a look at it, and I've got pictures that I can show you all. Um, if at any time any kid would've walked over and touched anything around that, that's two-hundred-and-seventy-seven volts that they would've took a hit from, more than likely, um, ER, and hopefully that wasn't, would be the extent of it, but it could, sir, you know. So, since it was in such terrible condition, um, I talked to Alan and Kristen?
Kristen.
Kristen.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's your way?
No.
Oh, okay.
But she, yeah.
I'm trying to get all the names of people straight. And, so they came out, or she asked me to come out and take a look at it, and so when I went out there and looked at it and everything, it was something that had to be addressed immediately. Um, again, they would have no lights on that whole lower area, or if they did turn them on, there would be a possibility that the, one of the children or adult could get electrocuted. Um, my line of work, I've been shocked with that, and it's not fun. It hurts. So, um, what we went ahead and did is just addressed the situation, fixed it, and made it a whole lot better.
Okay.
So, um, and if y'all have the estimate, I have the invoice here, which states the same thing as the estimate. I think there was no extra fees or anything like that in there. Um, and all we'd like to do now is just get paid for it and...
Well, I understand, and I, you know, I appreciate the, uh, urgency in which you repaired it. The question is, right now, who's gonna pay for it? And the voting on that, that's why we're, we're here to, this is a working meeting.
Right.
Um, the voting on who pays for that or parcel it, uh, will happen on the third of March.
Okay.
And I'm, and I'm open to any discussions again.
Oh, I got a whole lot of discussion.
Yeah.
So I'll start by saying, first off Mitch, I appreciate that you took the initiative to repair it. Since it was a safety hazard and it was a liability and people could've got hurt, I thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
I'll take it a step further. We, as a council, don't get a chance very often to, to help the youth in our community. And the ball field is something that all of the kids in our town use that play sports. And I, for me, I, I am like, can't even put into words how frustrated I am over this whole situation. I am ten different shades of ticked off right now because this, you guys should've been paid when the work was done. And as far as I'm concerned, if, if, if it, if it was my decision, that's exactly what would've happened. It, it should've been done. I, I, it makes the town look bad, number one. It makes us look like complete garbage, in my opinion, to sit here and fuss about politics when we're trying to take care of the kids in our town. This, this bill should've been paid. Man did the work. He should've been paid, period. I understand the contract. I get all that, but to me, just, just as, as, um, the gentleman from Camp, from Gamecock Sports said, this is a part of the ball field. In my opinion, this extends beyond just routine maintenance. It was a safety issue. People could've got hurt. And I feel it's something that the town should cover. And, and I will give you the same exact speech come the next meeting. I, I don't think, I don't know how anybody with any kind of a conscience can sit here and say otherwise.
We're not talking about any amount of money. We're talking about eight hundred bucks. I mean, it's, um, eight-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and thirty-one cents is all the amount is for repairs. Uh, I guarantee you, your insurance company, your deductible, would've been a lot more than that had someone got hurt, and they would've had to come out there and pick them up.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
That's okay. Was that box up to code?
No.
So, um...
And again, that's on us. We're, we're providing that facility for them to use.
For anybody that's providing a lease to a, a house, uh, apartment complex, to anything, those things have to be up to code for safety, um...
That box was installed how long ago? Yeah.
Yeah, thirty-four years ago.
And I feel like it's, it is a responsibility of the town to know that prior to entering a lease agreement.
The bad thing is, if you go out there and look at the rest of the stuff, you're in the same situation. All the rest of the stuff is all that same age, and all the rest of that stuff, more than likely, is probably on its last legs. Um, it's just like anything. Everything has got a time, um, on your computer. You can only push that one key so many times and that key don't work anymore.
Yeah.
You gotta go buy a new one. Um, if you look at all the piping and stuff that is on the poles going up, most of all the straps are off of it. It's up there flapping in the air. Um, when we went over there and repaired some of the ball light, or the, the lights, um, we, what we did work on, we went ahead and added that extra to it just because I don't want you to come to me in a month and say, hey, your stuff fell down. Well, it was the conduit that was hanging on the wires that actually caused all that. If you go out there and look, all the rest of your poles are that way as well.
Okay.
So, I'm not saying you need to go out there and look at it. Call somebody else in. They'll tell you this ain't there.
Moving on down the line. Questions, reference? Contract, payment? We got? I'm going down the other side of the council here. Like I said, it'll be voted on on the third.
Okay.
That's fine. Questions, comments?
I have a question about, uh, you got somebody that's doing their electrical in the bathrooms or getting kids or what?
No, no, they're not.
No, ma'am.
They're just doing the stalls.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Just the stalls.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't know, I'm, the first thing comes to my mind is that we don't have, or at one time there was the stipulation of a certain amount that had to come before the council before it got voted on. Um, but do we have that in writing anywhere anymore? Cause I thought we've already discussed this before.
It's, um, I believe it's five hundred dollars.
I don't, I don't think there's anywhere that this...
I haven't seen the paper in a long time.
That's what we gotta get away from, Gracie, is we're gonna go off of beliefs.
I'd have to go through a lot of minutes to find out when the decision was made, because that was made in the previous council, that you only had so much, but that's gonna be the problem we, we encounter is there was no vote to approve the expenditure of the funds, and there was no vote to approve the work.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. There's, by law, he is afforded, whether it's competitive bid or not, and I, for this, I think it's fifteen thousand. If it's for, like, structure, it's like a fifty thousand. But then, uh, the council had, or it's, I've never seen it myself, so I don't know. Uh, it's like most things, but the town, everything's hearsay, and that's what we have to move as a town away from. Start dividing facts and not opinions on stuff, and then we can give you the authority, or you should have the authority to be like, okay, hey, this is under this amount. Let's move out, draw fire, get it done.
I, well, we can go back from partly what Alan was saying. Um, my whole contention is though, under the lease agreement, and I think, I don't know if you've seen that, I know you have, um, maintenance at the field, and that's why it was, uh, this was since the last, last meeting, falls under Gamecock Sports. So unless the council votes to approve the expenditure, um, which is the council's decision, uh, that would have to happen on the third.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I will say, this, this is, this has gone about in the wrong way. Because as far as councilmen and council people, our authority is in between the gavel drops. After that, it's his job. So the, the awareness should've been raised through you. Uh, and any contract dealing should've been handled directly with him as well.
Yeah, as far, as far as the issue with the, the burnout light, I mean, I put that out in a group text to anybody the day it happened. So, this isn't anything that was done behind anybody's back. As soon as I got the information, I passed it along to you guys. The mayor called me and told me not to authorize any expenditures, and I told Mitch and Gamecock Sports that I could not, and that we would have to discuss this at the next meeting.
And I was not aware that the work was already done.
I wasn't aware it was already done either. I'm just finding out now myself.
Well, we're thankful it was done.
Sure, sure. Okay, so, uh, just from our side of it, um, the, the reason, so this, poor timing of all this, so we had our evaluation, baseball had started, as you know. Had our evaluations, that, the very first night we turned the lights on, that's when it happened.
Yep.
Practice was starting the next day. Um, so, understand, I get you guys side of it about, hey, look, why didn't you go ahead and get this fixed without? It's one of those things like, okay, if we don't get it fixed, we have one baseball field. We have one baseball field with, um, there are twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred and, a hundred and twenty kids on one baseball field up there, if we have one. It, we're, we're slammed with two. Um, if we only had one, we haven't. So it was, it, the, the, the decision was made, get it fixed. We will discuss, I understand you guys' decision on that, and I understand the way the setup is. And if we have to pay it, we will figure out how to pay it. And then again, I, that comes from a place of, we don't have a whole lot of money. We barely, we, we're literally paying the bills. And I can, you know, I, I, I can, I, I can see the funds, so it's not like it's, uh, hey, we're just trying to get this on y'all so that y'all, and I understand that y'all have bills to pay, and I appreciate y'all. All of you. Y'all have to be up here, so I appreciate everything y'all do. So from our side of it, it was like, we'll figure out how to pay for it if the city wants. So, um, because we can, we'll try to find a sponsor to pay for it. Um, that's kinda how we deal with anything. So, if that's the case, then we'll get it done. But we had to get it done in order to start the season to be able to play baseball in the city.
Okay, safely.
When it comes to people's safety and, and the safety of kids and people getting hurt, bureaucracy doesn't factor into that. You know?
True.
The sa- safety is life, people's lives, kids' lives, that comes first.
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, but that does not remove him from it.
And he was, he was not, he was not removed from it.
What I'm saying though is he could've made the call of evacuate the place or whatever. That call comes from him. That's not our call. We make the policies, he executes them. That's clear.
And, and...
And one of the things I would recommend for Gamecock Sports is, uh, the next group, you guys sit down and put more effort into that discussion about the contract.
And we discussed the contract, I think it's up in September.
Yes, sir.
And...
You're correct.
The count, we have a hundred and twenty days prior to, say, change it. You have ninety days prior to change it, and I think I talked to you that...
Yes, sir.
You know, we're talking, uh, 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 May?
Yes, sir.
May, June, we need to sit down together and look at, uh, rewording the contract.
Yes, sir.
But right now, we're, we're under a specific contract, and that's where I was falling with the start of this.
I, I, yeah, I, I understand, and I, I, I get your side of it.
My turn.
I'll see.
Go ahead.
Um, or, well, I kinda just lost my turn at all. Hold on. Um, hold on, hold on, it's important. Yeah, go ahead. Let me take your heart.
Okay. Mr. McCullough, I'm Courtney, and I don't know what we've meant because I, um, I'd like to preface this with saying that this was a discussion had prior to me being on the town council. I used to sit on your board, and I also simultaneously was the president of New Brockton Parks and Rec at the time. Um, I was very, very passionate about, and still am, passionate about this organization. Love it. Um, but we'll say also, I'll reiterate on what Todd said is, you know, this is the same advice that I had to Kristen prior while being on the board, and then a part of, um, looking at that lease the first time I was drafted with previous administration, um, the park specifically, you know, I, I would not rent a house without, with it saying somewhere in there that I was responsible for all the repairs.
Absolutely.
You know, it's just something that I, I would not do. Now, however, I'm not trying to say that in a, in a way of speaking negatively on this board or your board, and, um, I was a part of that board.
Sure.
But, you know, contracts are...
They are.
They're there, and, um, I would just reiterate on what Mr. Askey said, just
Yes, ma'am.
really gotta go over that and get that
Yes, ma'am.
fine tuned before signing it.
That's right.
And I would like to say too, for the kids' sake, I mean, is what we're looking at. We're not looking at, this takes kids off the streets from doing something wrong. This takes kids and teach them what they need to learn in life by being able to help each other and be able to accomplish something. And, so right now, we would still be sitting here waiting on this work to be done, and our kids would still be suffering because we can't come up with the...
And please note, you know, two, two board members here have kids that play in, in these sports.
Right, my son played there when he went to school. Now my grand youngest, she's playing there, you know, so...
We, we understand what you're saying.
May I, may I suggest that the next time an emergency issue arise, we do a special meeting? It can be discussed and voted upon on this, at the special meeting. You just need seventy-two hours.
Okay, um, for one, nobody who's on the board right now, Gamecock Sports, they were not there when the, it was originally drafted, correct? Except for Kristen? If y'all are all new members?
Um, I would suppose, I'm, I'm two years in, yeah.
Also, you know, and I get it. I get it. We got contracts, all those things. I agree that if it's a safety issue, I don't think it should, there should be a question about it, um, who takes care of it? But I do think back to whenever that, the tree fell across the road that was not technically hindering anybody from getting where they needed to go, cause they could've went either way. Um, and that five thousand dollars was, was used to get the tree removed. This is just eight hundred. So if we can approve a five thousand dollar tree to be removed, I feel like we can approve a eight hundred dollar safety issue that is, that is doing nothing but benefiting our kids.
Absolutely.
In my view.
We'll take it to a vote on the third.
Can we not vote to have a special vote?
I wish we could vote on it right now.
Can we not have a...
Middle of summertime, your air conditioner goes out, you're not gonna wait for somebody to vote on it. You're gonna get somebody over there and figure it out.
There are other responsibilities and other considerations, so thank you. I understand what you're saying.
So our kids don't even total up nowhere.
That's not what I'm saying.
Really?
Yes.
That's the way you feel about it? And they voted you in?
No.
Oh, okay.
The council did.
Okay, so when...
But, that's my responsibility, and my responsibility is to follow what the town has signed and is responsible for.
You're allowed to vote right now.
No, we're not. This is a working meeting.
Can we not make a special vote in a working meeting? Can we not decide that we wanna make a special vote?
I thought that with something where if it was unanimous, we could vote on it right now.
I know. And again, we all have thoughts. If we're gonna do it, listen, truth will...
Right. Cause I don't know it. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
I, I don't think anybody's opposed to paying the bill. I think the problem is we're trying to follow the proper procedure in order to spend the tax dollars. Because you can't spend tax dollars.
We appreciate y'all so much for taking care of this.
And listen, I love your praises recommending y'all. You know I love y'all. You know that.
Even the prices, I know that these, I'm sure could've been a whole lot higher because electric work is very expensive.
So I've gotta tell my guys they can't eat this week because I can't pay them, because I can't get paid. And they got kids, and some of their kids even play down here as well. I mean, come on, guys. This is not, this is what's wrong with America today. You know, when there's issues, you should be able to go and be able to take care of your issues.
But let, let me say one thing, though. You're sitting on that side of the fence, and if we looked at the hierarchy needs, cause if you think the ball field's bad, man, you haven't seen nothing.
Oh, I've worked on y'all's stuff.
Just starting with, just starting off with the fact that in government today, that we have a working meeting and then a meeting for the folks to see is already wrong, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's not how this works? That's, that's open to the public, all of them.
The problem is, is if we vote on it now and it's not legal, then we're operating outside of what we're allowed to. Um, and we certainly don't want that. And when we have an audit later, I don't think there's gonna be an issue with paying. And I understand, trust me, when I say like, when we wait to see checks, you know, you know our situation. So, trust me when I say, you know, there's no holdup here. It's just a matter of doing it the legal and proper way, which is what the town is trying to do moving forward, which it hasn't always been done in the past.
Well, can y'all promise me something? Can y'all at least? Well, can y'all promise me something, can y'all at least talk about it and figure out a way for when things like this does arise, that y'all would be able to handle it instead of-
I think next time going forward too, though, it needs to come directly, like we were already talking about, to the chain of command.
What we just talked, what we just talked about was trying to hold a special meeting, which in seventy-two hours, that was of a, uh, incident like this arising.
So, so, look at it this way too, with all the things that's wrong in the town, and you haven't seen the other infrastructure, the sewers, all of that.
Oh, yeah.
If somebody jumped in, uh, trust me, you haven't been on this side.
I've been in the deep, anyway. I, I put your clarifier in.
You should understand, and if somebody came in here every time, did, took it upon themselves to fix something, he would have, he would have no control over the town.
Right.
Okay, then, then that's it, it has to go through him.
So that's the problem, then, he didn't know about it.
Yeah, that's, and, and that is the problem, that, so communication went from you guys, uh, out and about, it shouldn't have been him.
To, to one of the council members.
So we shouldn't even, you're right, we shouldn't be having this conversation, y'all should've had it before the work was done. Instead of jumping in there and get it, I, I got it, kids are everywhere, but you know what, you cord on him off, you call him, and he makes the call.
And even still, like-
He may have evacuated the entire place, that's his call.
Yeah, I think that was.
Okay, then that's, well, that's why we're here.
Did Gamecock Sports evacuate it when it happened?
They moved over to the third.
They moved over to the other field.
Yeah. We, we turned the lights off and moved to the other part.
I think that's all I have.
I think that's where we're at, um, I mean, trust me, I want you to get paid.
No, it's no big deal.
It is a big deal.
Yeah, it's not, and this is, this is the way I feel about it, I'll make your donation right now, I'll pay your bill, don't worry about it. These people are not gonna do what they need to be doing, so I'll take care of it, just, this is free, thank you. Yeah, that's what the mayor said, don't.
Moving on down the list, we had a gentleman that was gonna come in here, talk about, um, parking problem over in Mayberry, um, he has not shown up. And Councilman, uh, Flowers has been working with him on that one. I don't know if we have any other comments from the public.
That went well.
Any other council, yeah, any other council member comments?
Y'all handled yourself pretty well, so, I appreciate it.
And we can still work on that.
I, I know, I, I'm, I'm, we're, we're, we're on the same page, I, I'm good with it. I appreciate y'all.
I didn't see it getting there, though.
Me, me.
No, I, I mean, I, I personally wanted to get paid, but we went around about it the wrong way.
I agree, sir.
And like I was saying, we gotta make sure, and that's what this place is. We just, everything is fly-by-the-seed your pants, um, he has to be in control, um, and that's just the way it's gotta be.
But, uh, I just wanna clarify, as soon as I got the information, everybody in the group texted it too. I wasn't keeping it to myself, I didn't circumvent anybody, the mayor knew.
We're not saying you did, but at that point, all, everything goes from him to the party that's involved.
And I, I even had, I even had Kristen go so far as to ask me, what we gotta get to work on, I need a P O, I said, you need to contact the mayor's office, I got the text message, I can show you.
And the only person that contacted me with any of that information was you, I had no other contact until, what, a number of days later? Yes. Last, late last week.
And, and I got, I got, I got in black and white, where I told her, we had this discussion already, and I said, I do not have the authority to authorize any kind of payments or any work to be done. You need to contact the mayor's office, in black and white, I got it.
And I, and I wholeheartedly believe his heart's in the right place.
Oh, one hundred percent, it's no question, no question in my mind.
Get it done, um, we just didn't worry about it.
Can you imagine, just think for a minute, can you imagine, and it wouldn't be Gamecock Sports, it would be the town. Do you know the kinda liability lawsuits we would get slapped with if some kid got electrocuted there? That's, that's on us, that's not on Gamecock Sports. Millions of dollars you're talking about, for wrongful death and neglect of infrastructure, that's on the town.
But you know what, having, having said that, since we're talking about, if that's the case, then you should probably shut the entire park down.
Exactly.
Cause I can go out there, just as a, we're growing up in construction, and be like, like you were saying, not code, not code, not code, not code.
Well, he just advised that the rest of it's not up to code either.
But, and that's not just the park, that's the entire town.
Nope. And it's, well, the same comment I had is, when was all that, it was installed by code.
When it was installed.
When it was installed.
So, yeah, so there, you do have that portion of it, I mean, just because something's not up to today's code, I mean, you don't have to go pull everything out of your house when code changes.
We do have insurance, but I don't, so, we, we have paid up already.
Okay, any other comments on another topic? Ms. Whitaker.
Mr. Haskins. I think Gracie's gonna hook me up with the, uh, the ordinances, so we can pass it off to the gentleman over on Burdwell Road.
Okay, or the-
The zoning, if he had questions about the trailers, and then I can talk to you offline, cause there's some, that's why we need all this stuff redone, there's major loopholes in it.
The, uh, yeah, I don't see a problem with the trailer going in on Burdwell Road, because it's zoned agricultural.
But it depends on what side of the fence that you're arguing for, cause I can point out in there, where it talks about, the only, uh, place for a mobile home is a zone of mixed, and our current map has no mixed, I know, at all.
That was how they got out of allowing mobile homes into town, was either it's ar- it's either agricultural, you can put it on agricultural land, or you can put it on mixed residential zoning district. Um, I've got those.
Well, that, that, that I've read, yeah.
That's what I said.
Going in on the backside of Burdwell Road up on Sunset Drive?
Yeah.
Agricultural property.
Well, I understand, I mean, there's the hierarchy of it, but there's, there's no, in one of the pair drives in there, it's, it states mixed. There's no zoning at all for mixed.
No, that's correct.
Yeah, but it says agricultural and mixed residential.
Okay, I see that, yeah, the agricultural, yes.
If you look under the categories, under agricultural and what it allows, um, it says mobile home under agricultural.
Yeah.
Oh, I would love to figure out how we even get rid of that, like, cause that's dumb to me, like, if somebody, mobile homes, some of them are nicer than some of the houses we have in town. If somebody wants to put a mobile home on their property, why are we telling them they can't?
I can attest to why they did it, uh, we used to, until they did that, we used to have a lot of, like, the trailer that is no longer there, that was code enforced on, on Vestercole Street.
Single-wide-
They were rundown-
Were coming in.
Falling apart.
Well, I mean, could we just put stipulations on like, you know, the age of it, or the whatever, I don't know, I just got a problem with telling people what they can do with their property that they pay for, that's just, I don't love that.
This is, this is no different than any other major city, that has codes depending on what you can build, and what you can't build in certain parts of the- Yeah, in certain parts of the town, or different communities.
I wish you would've asked me first, I have something to add to that.
But that's okay.
Code enforcer, um, is he gonna be going around, and I know I missed the last meeting, or is he gonna be going around looking at previously condemned properties, or anything, or what's, what's-
He would, if we hired a code enforcer, he would enforce what codes we do have in the community, plus he would be able to inspect, um, facilities as they're being built. And we can bring up, I've got to, uh, talk to a code enforcer, why did you bring this up, I've talked to the, um, I guess the owner of the new gas station, the guy that's building it, um, he's already hired a code enforcer, we'll have code enforcers that we will be able to see the reports as that facility is being built. So, um, my search for an independent code enforcer, I don't think I'm gonna do that, but we're gonna be able to review, or have somebody review what, what they're doing, reference sewage, electrical water, and building structure.
For the future, and, and I think it's a bridge too far, but if we could get the, the baseline set of like, for the, like, even if you hired a code enforcer, the mechanism that he would, his SOP to operate off of is so broke, we would lose every time. I mean, it just, it's that broke.
I need you to put that in English, cause I-
Even a code enforcer has a standard operating procedure of how they deliver a notice, and that's what jacked us up the last time, cause there's like a hundred and twenty day, timeline in there, and the town dropped the ball, and that's how the lady would be able to stay in, because the town has to start it all over if you don't follow that.
Okay, I got you.
There's timelines on, it's inspecting-
What you said, though.
Inspecting, uh, reporting.
About your own property, which went on it.
Yeah, and that's, again, um-
We can change that.
We can change that, but I don't think we're any different than any other, um, community.
I wanna be, that's why I don't live in none of them other communities, cause I don't wanna be like them.
Well, there has to be some regulatory-
I just feel like, there are some houses on John Street, that I have seen a whole lot of mobile homes that are a whole lot nicer, okay, that's just my personal-
I wouldn't, I would argue that one, I had a nice mobile home till I built the house. Anyways.
You don't have to stare at them places on a regular basis, I do.
Any other things?
Yes, I got something, okay, um, for one, I know we don't have much of a crowd here, but I would just like to say, just to bring the happiness back to us, girl. Um, you know, this is all new to the majority of us, okay, and things that are even new to Todd, somehow he just automatically knows the correct way to go about them, because he's a good adult, I don't know, I don't know, okay. The rest of us, we are just, we are just learning as we go, so, eh, we got some bumps when new things come up, that we don't know how to handle them and execute them, but it's a learning experience, and we're gonna get it done, okay, we're gonna figure it out, everything's gonna be fine, and we're gonna make the town run to the best of its capabilities, okay?
I think anybody's got a problem with that.
Well, I'm just stating that we're happy, it's good for fun, this is not my like to, see, how you make me not happy when I'm trying to be happy, okay, this is another thing. Um, right there at the four-way stop, right there in front of the high school, is that, the street department has got to come fill that back in, okay, and we about to lose-
Four-way stop.
Mm-hmm, right by the high school.
You have a bumper, you don't lose it.
My whole, my car needs a new alignment after hitting that bump, okay, it is.
Do you know of a four-way stop, you mean the Y intersection?
No.
No, the one down by the high school.
Yeah.
It's a four-way.
That comes up by the building y'all trying to see, you know, right up from the post office.
Right, yeah, it's right there.
Oh, no, no, okay, yeah, a block up from the old city hall.
No, 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 down, at the high school, where the stop sign is, at the high school.
Yeah, that's a Y intersection, isn't it?
No, it's a four-way.
Okay.
Okay, there's a really big gully, gully, right there, it has got to be filled in, and while they're doing that one, the one right there in front of the post office also needs more of that stuff, and then I saw the waterboard packing that new hole, and then it didn't get filled in, I don't know if it's the water dry, or whatever the case was.
We talked to them today.
Then it washed right back out, cause it wasn't filled before the rain came.
Yeah.
So, the one-
We're gonna try to get more dirt in there tomorrow.
That one's not a huge big deal, cause it's so far off the road, but those other ones are absolutely horrible, so if you could ask the street department to pretty please drive around in any spots that they see, just go ahead and fill them, that's why we bought that whole pallet.
We're gonna get more.
Okay, well, whatever the case is, please, Mike, don't get on that, cause that is best rough.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, um, in case maybe this realization didn't hit anybody, I'm hoping that we did not lose Bird Electrical Services as a provider for Gamecock Sports. I spearheaded the last search to find them, with Courtney's help, I won't do it again. So, if they decide they don't wanna work for the town, because they think the town is screwed up, and isn't gonna pay them, be on you to find the new contractor, I'm not doing it.
That's fine. Mayor's comments, um, the water department is, uh, we've signed the final, uh, paperwork for this new generator, and that's working forward, um, I think it's still gonna be a three to four month, uh, project, and that's the final expenditure of the obligation of the ARPA funds. The fire department has moved forward with their, their vehicle, they may already have that, I have to, I haven't talked to, uh, Chief Arnold yet. The, uh, we received a check for thirty-seven hundred dollars, uh, today, from the sale of the police vehicle back in June or July.
July.
July. Um, we've got a number of expenditures coming up for training for, uh, officers, um, so I would like you to think on that, but I would like to put that into the training, uh, site at Helford Police Department, and, you know, you guys can vote on that come the, uh, the third. We've run into a legal decision, where the weapons for twenty-one, twenty-one hundred plus, uh, that we wish to dispose of, both the district attorney and one of the judges, and then district judges in Enterprise, said we can't do it, um, and we're gonna have to probably advertise all the weapons, um, to see if anybody with, after a time period, comes in and wants to claim any of them. The buyback, yeah.
Let me-
Go ahead.
Reading that, some of the stuff that we've got was taken back before you would come, the chief here. There, there are no case numbers, no defendant, no suspect, no nothing, uh, who were taking weapons back then, didn't do a report, didn't do anything, and that's the reason we're having a problem with it. Now, stuff after I took over, we're up to par on it, they're good with that, but just other stuff that whoever before me didn't do that job.
But we have some case numbers that are already been closed, and they still want us to advertise, correct?
Correct.
So what does that, that procedure look like, you know, do you have to have proof that it's your weapon, or what?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
You have to have a serial number?
They're gonna have, you know, where they bought it from, who they bought it from, serial number, model.
Not anybody can just walk up and say, that's mine.
No, ma'am, they are not.
Some of these we, I mean, when we found the weapons clearing out the old city hall, uh, some of them have been in there for years. So, there's a lot of, a lot of-
That's one thing we're scared of, that it's gonna happen, we put it in paper, John Doe three, so, that's my gun, I've, it's been missing for ten years. And you got proof, that it's yours, no proof, no gun, I mean, we just give a gun to, to a criminal or somebody, no, ma'am.
After we go through that procedure, we can go back to the DA, or the circuit judge, and request, um, the capability of selling them off. But that was their opinions, we, we talked to two people.
So there's a timeframe of them advertising, and, and response, two weeks?
Two weeks, two weeks, hell, one, back to two weeks.
So we're working on putting some sort of a information page together to put in the old clipper, and then, that'll be a little while yet. Ma'am?
I do have something else, but I do not know where I should discuss it, or who exactly I should discuss it with, I should've, I should've- No, but listen, I don't know who can buy them, but here we go. I don't, I don't, I should've called Todd and asked him what I was supposed to do, but, um, it's kind of a personal situation, not with me, it was a parent that reached out, um, but I don't know, it, I don't know, I don't know.
You wanna just talk about it privately?
I might even need to talk to the chief about it, I don't mind, we can continue.
Okay.
I'll figure it out, I don't mind.
Uh, a little bit of more news, uh, with the chief's help, uh, we put the senior citizen bus up on GovDeals, and that sold Friday for thirty-nine hundred dollars. Um, I've talked to the insurance guy, and, uh, Ronnie Young, we're supposed to get twenty-nine thousand dollars back on the policy. And then I talked to DOT today, and most of that money is gonna go towards a, I think you said a twenty percent down payment on a new vehicle. So that's all in the works, but I don't have the final answer from DOT on that yet.
Twenty percent down payment on a new vehicle for what?
The senior citizen bus. Senior, senior-
A new senior citizen?
Yeah, another senior citizen.
Gotcha.
Senior center bus.
If I understood right, when we were all talking to the lady at DOT about it, since it was under a grant and was wrecked, even though they don't have that specific grant anymore, they're still gonna have us fall in under another grant?
They're gonna attempt that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, we could, we don't have to pay for the vehicle in full, that, the majority of it would be covered under the grant, aside from that twenty percent.
Yeah. So, they're still working that.
Fingers crossed.
The website, I ask you, and again, it's newbrocktonal.org, to have the council members look at the website, it's up. Click on things, see how you can navigate around, uh, we've got a couple things, um, we've put information on there so people can, under services, get their, uh, business licenses for the town, um, we've got contact info, I think I need a picture from you.
Nope, it's not me.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I, I only looked at it quickly, we need a picture from you.
I'm gonna send you one that says, everyone's favorite councilwoman, and you put that right there, and they'll know exactly who they're talking about, I'm just saying.
With underneath your chip, is that what you're saying?
I'll give you a damn picture, everybody knows what I look like.
And I think that's the information that I have, with the vehicles, the ARPA, uh, and the other stuff coming in. We're not gonna receive the thirty-nine hundred dollars for the bus for a little while, but that was sold on Friday, so that's. And we're gonna look at the four-way stop and pull it off this again, we'll drive through that tomorrow. Motion to adjourn. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, one of the comments I had was, uh, the council members wanted to have various information reference the I three vertical and the garbage collection program.
Now, let me get back to my little pamphlet, so I don't lie to anybody.
And what, what we're looking for here is to let you look at this real quick and ask what questions or what other information you would like to have, so this can be.
Well, I think some of it's gonna need some explaining.
Brought up at the, uh, regular council meetings.
So, the first page is what we've taken in so far, keep in mind, we have three hundred and, or five hundred and thirty-five accounts, we've only done three hundred and forty-seven transactions, so we still have a ways to go with this month's payments. The second page is the thirty delinquent accounts, I have redacted their names, but that's there to show you guys how many delinquents there are, and how far they are, they're all at least ninety days in the delinquents. I have to go until a hundred and twenty before I can close them out, um, this, this one is a rough draft of the ordinance Todd asked to be updated for the garbage.
The delinquent account information, I think, is what you were asking about at the bottom.
Yeah, for the delinquent accounts, and I, I went ahead and put a, a rough estimate of a raise in there that can be changed, that's just there for informational purposes. Um, I'll give you guys a second to read. I put a copy of the application in there, cause, uh, Todd, I remember you asked me last time if they know what they're signing up for as far as delinquency and everything. They're down at the bottom, under charges and payment terms, it has the Alabama code and all of that for collection of delinquency in accounts. Um, the last page is just informational purposes, I know we're gonna be discussing raising the garbage, um, this is what we pay per year in that very last little box on the right, that comes out of the garbage account, and what's in that garbage account as well. Um, and I know numbers were asked for, and so as far as February's billing goes, we'll, we're set to get ten thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars in total. Those thirty delinquent accounts are seventeen hundred and ten dollars and a little bit of change. And, and the delinquent accounts, every time I do a de- end of month, there's more delinquent accounts. When I did the original end of month, there was forty-four, I've had fourteen come in and settle up, that's why there's only thirty now. Um, so, six hundred and forty-nine total cans are out, as, out of the five hundred and thirty-five accounts, that's because some have multiple cans. Um, the three dollar leave and limb fee from those five hundred and thirty-five accounts is sixteen hundred and five dollars. The cans, six forty-nine times fifteen, what we're currently charging is nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. What Meridian is charging us is fifteen dollars and eighty-three cents. So, that would, out of the six hundred and forty-nine cans, that's ten thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-seven cents a month. Which means monthly, if we don't raise the garbage, monthly, we're losing five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents, at a yearly loss of six thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and four cents. And so, what I put on the draft ordinance was, um, an increase to a solid twenty bucks. A lot of people are coming in and handing me twenty dollars and saying, add the two dollars to my next month's bill. Um, and I thought, doing it at the twenty dollars, making it seventeen per can, and the three dollar leave and limb, would cover next year and possibly the year afters increases as well, because they increase on us every October. And I don't know about you guys, but I don't know if you wanna discuss raising it every single year.
No, I made the motion one or two meetings ago to raise the trash bill, and then they voted it down, they wanna keep losing money.
And I still stand by the reason why I voted it down, I wanna see exact numbers right here, I wanna be able to see what the money was going to. So, I mean, I, I don't think me or Justin ever were saying that we don't agree with raising it, but we wanted to see what the numbers were going to.
So, I would like to address something with everybody up here too, on the, the draft ordinance.
The resolutions.
Uh, resolution, Alan, you and I ran into this, it talks about remodeling debris, any debris that is created by contractors must be disposed of by that contractor, so if you're telling me that, if I'm doing my own renovation, which I can likely do.
Well, you are the contractor in that case.
No.
If you're doing the reservation, or?
You don't have to be a contractor to be a, to do a renovation.
No, no, but in that case, you are the contractor doing the renovation on your property. No? I, I, I think that's.
I think that's in there.
I mean, words have meanings.
So, if you have a.
I don't have a contractor's license or anything, nor do I have to.
Yeah, I think we're going too deep on that, if you're, if you're, we had this problem today, we had a gentleman come in, um, and they basically, he had some, um, sheetrock in his garbage can, and they passed on him, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And they passed on him.
The garbage company won't pick up any wood remnants like that, any remodeling debris or anything like this?
That's the point I'm trying to make.
They gave him a second can, just to answer that question, so he can be good till next week.
So, why don't we just put any debris, or any construction debris, or no, no remodeling debris will be disposed of?
I can, I can change that, yeah.
You just make it sound.
Well, it does say no pickup for landfill or bulk pickup, and all of those items will be considered landfill. It's even listed.
Do what, but again, you, we broke out remodeling debris, so I'm just saying, just remove contractor.
Okay.
That's fine.
Or any debris that is created by a contractor, any remodeling, yeah, we just gotta work on that one, I think.
Yeah, I can, I have no problem taking that one out.
What does everybody else think, if y'all are good with it, I'm good with it, but it's just.
So, you think it should say like, no remodeling debris, period?
Yeah, the town will not dispose of remodeling debris.
Yeah.
Or the town is not responsible for disposing of any home remodeling debris.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good. I like it.
Well, realistically, I'm sorry, uh, realistically, how about I just take it out in general, because all of that is listed under that paragraph above it. As, as well as the state law that makes it illegal to dump those anywhere but a landfill.
You know, you got a pretty good point, it says wallpaper, roofing material, plaster, concrete, tires closed, waste, refuse.
Sound good, just take the whole sentence off.
I agree. Good to go.
Now, as you look at the report that, uh, Gracie put forward, is there any other information that you would like added to it? Because this is gonna be the standard at the council meetings.
I think it looks great.
You do.
I really do, I know you've worked hard on it, Gracie.
Thank you.
Great job.
Any other information?
I would like to see, if you could find a spot just to put, like, on this cover sheet, um, how much we took in, how much we're being charged by, what is it, Meridian?
That is a printout from my system as far as how many people pay, I did not create that pie graph for you guys.
Okay.
So, it's under the reconcile option, and I click a button and it generates that, I cannot add or subtract from it.
No, but we can come up with those numbers.
Yeah, if we could have that month, those monthly numbers in this batch of paperwork somewhere that says what we took in and what we're spending. So, if the motion comes up again about raising the trash bill, and people wanna ask questions, they have it right in front of their face.
Alan, does that last page not answer your question, just?
That's, no, that's how much we're paying yearly for the system that I use.
But you give us those numbers every meeting, so what he's saying though is just like, why not go ahead and put it in the paperwork?
I give them to you every meeting.
I see.
I can do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Um, then I would love to still, I know nobody else cares about the number but me, but I would still love to know, like, a total of how much we're taking in for leaf and limb, and how much we are spending approximately on the leaf and limb truck, I would like to know that. Just out of curiosity.
I can tell you how much we take in for leaf and limb, but I do not do anything with the finances or the accounts, so that's not something I could give you.
We would have, we can, we could go back and look and see what we spent on the truck, I mean, we haven't broken the truck in the last three, four months.
Right, but like, huh, but like, fuel or whatever, whatever we are spending when we pe- pick up leaves and limbs in a month's time, I would love to know that, just out of curiosity. Just because if we're taking in sixteen hundred dollars worth of leaf and limb stuff, and we're only spending five hundred on leaf and limb, then that's a profit that, which has been the whole point the whole time, that's a profit that either could go towards offsetting the cost of the garbage, or putting it up for the leaf and limb truck if it breaks out, uh, if it breaks down, or whatever the case is. I would just like to know how much we're taking in, which I know you just said it's sixteen hundred or whatever, and how much we are actually spending on leaf and limb pickup. If that's what the money is, uh, uh, allocated for, how much are we actually using of it for that?
I do get the receipts for the gas from Marty, um, but usually the diesel one is, it depends on what he uses the diesel for.
Well, it would be more than that, it would be the cost of the employees running the truck too, that's what factors into it.
I would, I would have to have him start recording which receipt was for the grapple truck, so I could do that, I can. I won't have that for you right now, as in like tomorrow, I can start compiling that information from this point forward.
And I don't remember the last time, we had the truck in about mid-year last year, so I don't remember what the maintenance was. I don't know. But we can look at that.
Um, I do know Parker Diesel's no longer a thing, and they were the cheapest place around for us to get it fixed. We haven't had to get it fixed since Parker Diesel, Parker Diesel closed. However, we do need to be looking into who or where we need to have it worked on in the event it does go down again, because that sucker is the bane to my existence, I just want you guys to know that.
Sounds good.
Cause it's, hydraulic lines are constantly blowing on that thing, and I'm just.
He fixes them most of the time.
Lucky it hadn't happened in the last several months.
Anything else? Now, motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, second.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, yes.